I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
We stand one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. That was perfectly in unison. All right, let's do a roll call of attendance, please.
Tammy Larue. Tammy Larue.
Yeah, oh, am I on mute? Yes, I'm here.
Tammy Larue.
You can't hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm not, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, I'm here.
Maybe Brady can pick up the call. Well Liz, we can hear you. I don't know if you can hear us. So Brady, pick up.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Here.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Present.
And Member Rappaport.
Present.
Okay. The town of meeting will be holding the February 18th, 2021 Planning Board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
It will be held via Cisco Webex. The Webex link is townofberlinetonwebex.com/townofberlineton. The meeting access code is 1790217750, meeting password 45. You can also join by phone 1617-315-0704. The meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT Government Comcast 99, RCM Channel 15, Verizon Channel 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page. The meeting, the public will be able to make comments during the hearing. During the time for public comment, questions can be asked via WebEx, phone, Facebook Live, WebEx Chat, and at email at planning@berlineton.org. During the meeting, all persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, please call Pacific Stop at 781-2701-645, or email at planning@berlineton.org. All statutory votes will be taken by a roll call vote, and then I hand it back to the chairman.
Thank you, Kristin. The first thing on our agenda is citizens' time. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please make your, please identify yourself and step forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements. Who's doing announcements?
I can do announcements, Madam Chair. So the zoning bylaw review committee, the Sign Bylaw Subcommittee, is having a meeting on Monday, March 1st at 5:30 PM via Zoom. The land use committee is going to have their next meeting on Tuesday, March 2nd at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And I also have another announcement that the transportation committee is seeking input on travel preferences and needs. They're doing a survey, so anybody that interests, is interested, please go to the link, which is can be found at berlineton.org/736/transportation. And our amazing admin Jen is on that committee, and they're really looking to help alleviate traffic in town and make sure everybody gets around. So it's a good cause. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Liz. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals or administrative matters, so we're moving on to our first item, item 7A. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, take items 7A and 7B together for discussion purposes, and vote on them separately.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 7A is a continued public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.2.23, passenger stations, landing fields, sites, buildings, and facilities for other public services, public works, and structures of the zoning bylaw, 41 middle set, excuse me, 41 Burlington Mall Road. Leahy Clinic Foundation is the applicant. And item 7D is a continued public hearing application for approval of a site plan, 41 Burlington Mall Road. Leahy Clinic Foundation is the applicant.
Madam Chair, you do have to make a roll call.
We are going to, you're right, we do need to take a call to take the most, those two items out of order. Do we need to do a roll call, Kristin, or can?
Well, we seconded, yeah.
You just, you, so we talked about it earlier.
Yes.
To take them together isn't something you have to necessarily do roll call, so it was, you just didn't say all in favor.
That's right. All those in favor of taking these two items out of order for discussion purposes, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay, no nays, then we don't have to do a roll call.
There will be a roll call for all your decisions and continuances.
Right. Okay, and for closing meetings, discussions, okay. Who is here representing Leahy Clinic?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I am substituting for my partner, Mark Vaughn, this evening. Based upon the last meeting, there seemed to be one issue of further clarification, and that was the route that the Med Flight would fly upon departure from Leahy Clinic. And I have with me this evening Michael Slasher from Leahy, as well as Tim Williams from Allen and Major's, and we have some information to show the board on that question. So I'll turn it over to Tim, I believe.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Tim Williams with Allen and Major Associates. And maybe Mike, you can help me out with this a little bit, or if there's a representative from the architect on the, on the call. But essentially, we walked through this, this flight pattern previously, and as you recall, the red was where the existing helicopter comes to the existing current helipad location, flying up and down the 128 corridor essentially as a roadmap to the helipad, coming from both the north and the south. Under the proposed helipad scenario, they would follow that same path because the Med Flight is located in Hanscom. So again, they use 128 as essentially their corridor up and down to get to Leahy. And as a result, there was a site meeting and further coordination with Med Flight. And as a result, the flight pattern that previously crossed Burlington Mall Road into the neighborhood has been drastically reduced down based on some of the fact that the helicopter can get up at a, at a higher elevation, and the radiuses that they could turn to are a little unobstructed with the vegetation and the height of the buildings out there. Maybe someone from Med Flight can explain that a little bit better than myself. I want me to have those guys chime in.
Hello, Madam Chair. This is Rick Kenne, representing Boston Med Flight. We went out and did a site visit. Prior to our site visit, we had gone on the evaluation done by the aviation consulting firm, visiting the site and looking at the vegetation in the area, specifically the trees. It should not be any issue for the helicopter to, if it is departing to the west, to make a turnout prior to reaching Mall Road, and then turning back towards 128 to depart the area.
And I believe, Tim, is there a video that we have showing the approach?
I do have a video. If you can give me a quick sec, I'll tee it up.
Thank you.
When Tim, Tim Williams is teeing it up, I just wanted to note that Mark Seiya from the Fire Department also works with Med Flight as well. I've spoken to him quite a bit and asked him to join the meeting, so if any more members have questions for Mark as we go on, he's here from, and has a lot of experience from the Burlington side, so just wanted to let you know that. Lieutenant Mark Seiya.
Okay, here we go. Let me know if you can't see this.
We can see it.
Madam Chair and members of the board, the intent of that was to show that the proximity of the heliport to the emergency room drastically reduces the response time to get a patient, a critically ill patient or trauma patient into the emergency room, and as was discussed at earlier, meetings doesn't interfere with the traffic flow in and around the site. So that there were a number of questions that come up when I was watching the earlier presentations on those issues. So it was felt that if we could show that it's a quick and effective way of delivering trauma patients, as well as not interfering with the ongoing activities at the clinic. And I believe that was the major issue remaining, so we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm going to, I'm not going to go through the whole line of members, because we did discuss this already pretty, pretty carefully. And I recall, as I recall, that was the outstanding issue. So I'm going to ask my fellow board members if they have any questions to identify themselves, questions either for the applicant or for Lieutenant Seiya, who was kind enough to join us tonight. Any board members? Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think the main concern from the last meeting was actually the neighborhood.
Right.
Because the flight path, and I know everyone's concerned here about Leahy and, you know, the traffic and upset in their operation, but the neighborhood, the flight path that you had for that, for the new landing was over Laurel Lane and over Lexington Street. And I know the neighbors, they're very concerned about that. Do we contact those and let them know what was going on? Because they're probably outside of where they need to be contacted, right? But the flight path is going right over their heads at 350 feet.
I believe it's, it's coming in and falling Mall Road now by and large, Bill.
Yeah, so that was, that's what the revised one, but for the FAA requirement, it had to go over those houses? Right? So is, so I guess it's a new flight path, not within the, what the FAA requires?
What do you say, what the FAA requires?
So when, when you showed me the last one, Bob, and I know you weren't here, the flight path was what the FAA required. You had an envelope of where, how high it was and how wide it was, and went right over the neighborhood. So that was what the FAA required. That's what we heard last time. Now?
I think it was, I think if I could, the prior presentation showed an area of potential effect based upon wind patterns and existing conditions. This is more precise, showing that you have to bend out towards Mall Road to clear the tree line between the district and Leahy Clinic, but the intent is to fall down and then exit along 128.
Okay, so thanks, Bob. So the last time, I understood that that was the flight path for the requirement from FAA. Did I get that wrong?
So, so Bill, this is, this is Kristin. So what we had asked after, after we met, I met with Lieutenant Seiya to discuss that, what he thought about the flight pattern, and also asked the applicant team to talk more closely with Med Flight of the actual pattern and path that they would anticipate taking, and that's what you're seeing in the new plan. So the FAA was the, you know, kind of generalized anticipated, but the actual Med Flight plan is more precise than that, the one you saw last week.
Right, so the FAA is, is what they have to have for clearance over roads and towers and things like that, right?
Correct.
Streets and things like that. So I guess, I'll ask it one more time. Did the neighbors that that FAA pattern was going right over the houses, did they get notified of this? I asked at the last meeting, to notify those neighbors.
Of the flight pattern?
That was going right over the house, Bob.
Yeah, I don't think they would be notified of the flight pattern.
So, no, that, yeah, again, you weren't there. What I asked at the last meeting was that they be notified. So I'm asking, did they get notified?
There haven't been additional notifications based on the revised conversation with the
Thank you. And the last meeting, I asked about parking for the seniors of Burlington about that, and we did get some follow-up on that. And the applicant said, yeah, there are vouchers for that. It turns out the vouchers, they have 250 every six months, which is about, if you go on a weekday, it's about two a day. And the parking is actually not a parking voucher, it's, it's a voucher for one hour of parking. So if you've ever gone to Leahy, anybody ever gone there and had an appointment in, in and out in an hour? No. So tell me if you have, you'd be, you'd be singular. So what that proposes to, for Leahy, and based on the, the impact that's going to be to the neighborhood over there, that, that voucher be enhanced such that it can be a realistic visit for our seniors. Again, it's only, it's only, Bob, if you give me a second, thanks. So now, if you look at the count of them, it's only two a day, so we could actually do the math to figure how many Burlington seniors are actually going there, and how long they're staying, based on their appointment. Because if you do an appointment, realistically, if they've been there, Bob, what they do is they put appointments on appointments on appointments. You do a lab, you go visit a physician, you have another lab. So you're there for, for three, four hours. So maybe Leahy can come back with us a proposal on that.
Yeah, I, you know, I honestly don't think it's an appropriate discussion for the planning board, because that gets wrapped into more global discussions when they, when they discuss their pilot agreement and other impacts for the community. And there are complicated issues involved with how you finance and maintain that part structure, so.
Yeah, I was on the Board of Appeals, Bob, when that happened, and they, that came up as well, and they said they couldn't afford it at the time. But what we're doing here is this, this helipad is not cheap, right? So there's money that's there now that wasn't there for that they had to have the parking garage for the hospital to survive. So it's a different circumstance. So again, I have a bit of history on that, as you, you probably, you probably at the board. So maybe, again, I think it is appropriate, because you are helping out Leahy here. In turn of that, we, you know, we're not going to stay pat. Leahy's not staying pat, and I think we should probably enhance. Probably enhance the benefits of the community, since we're at it, because it will never happen again.
But I'd probably take a different tact here. I would venture to say that by moving it adjacent to the, the emergency room, that is a benefit to the community, because the transporting of a critical ill patient from the current location down to the hospital takes a matter of time. And this is a trauma center, so someone in a trauma situation, that five or 10 minutes could be critical. So I would take a contrary view that you are enhancing the benefit to the town.
If you're, if you're coming in from a heliport, which probably Burlington residents, and I'm thinking for the Burlington residents here, Bob, are probably not taking a helicopter in from, they're probably taking an ambulance, because they're not too far away.
May I object for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to offer the following. I do think that moving the helipad is a, is a benefit to Burlington, because, and we have been asking, Burlington, the town of Burlington has been asking Leahy Clinic to move the helicopter pad to its own site for many, many years. And it, in moving it, it releases our own emergency medical personnel, and our emergency personnel are able, they're not, they're not required to be on site the way they have been in the past. But I also agree with Bill that it would be nice for our seniors to have free parking. So what I'd like to do perhaps, Bob, is phrase it more as a request than a demand, that we ask Leahy Clinic to come back and see if they could offer a better free parking option for our seniors, whether it's more vouchers or vouchers that last longer. And, and I understand that there are implications and that Leahy has expenses they need to cover, but we also have senior citizens who really can't afford to pay for parking a lot. So I think if we could reach out to Leahy and, and request that they take another look at what they've offered in the past and update it, perhaps they would be willing to do that.
What I would, a hybrid of that, or a variation of that, may I suggest that the planning board send a letter to the Select Board suggesting that in connection with future negotiations on any pilot agreement that is periodically negotiated, that that be an item that should be addressed.
I have no problem doing that, but I also think it's perfectly reasonable for us to request, not demand, that they look at it now. Do you think we can agree on that?
We could, as a condition for an approval on the permit?
I'm not asking that it be a condition for approval for the permit. I'm asking that you?
Yeah, no, I think that we could have a discussion, that we can internally have a discussion of that as to the, the public policy behind that, and the ramifications of that, and report to the staff or to the board as to, you know, that in connection with future discussions, that would be an issue. But yeah, we could take a look at that.
Okay, that, that is something I would like to, to request. I don't know if that actually addresses Member Gaffney's concern, but it's something that I think is a reasonable first step.
Yeah, and if that first step ever happens, I'd be very surprised, you know, based on my experience. So, you know, that's why I say we put it in here, and you get, you get it going, and then if somebody says we can't do it, and like you said, Bob, grab the data. How many seniors are going in there? You know, for how long, how, what's the cost of that would be to Leahy versus, you know, the inconvenience it is to the seniors at this point? You know, versus how many millions of dollars it's taken to build the helicopter pad, you know?
Okay, thank you, Bill. Are there any other members that had any questions or comments on this matter?
Member Raymond is now present. And I have no question.
Oh, you don't have a question? You just wanted to let us know you're here. Thank you, Paul. I'm gonna see, okay, if the members do not have any questions, I'd like to see if there are any other people, any residents, or abutters, or anyone else in the listening audience that had a question or a comment on this matter. Please identify yourself. Staff, do we see anyone? No.
Chairman Larue, this is Brady. I don't see anyone.
Thank you, Brady. If that is the case, I think we've had all of our questions answered, and I think we're ready to move forward and close the public hearing on this matter. May I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing, Madam Chair. Ernie?
Second. Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, after many, many years, I am happy to make the following motion, to approve the request of Leahy Clinic Foundation, Inc. for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.2.23, passenger stations, landing fields, sites, buildings, and facilities for other public services, public work structures of Article 4 of the zoning bylaw of the town of Burlington to allow for the construction and use of a 3.025 square, 3,000, excuse me, 25 square foot elevated helipad, and a 325 square foot expansion of the existing MRI service building with additional site improvements located in the general IG and water resource zoning districts at 41 Mall Road, contained in Exhibit A as attached.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, I think we have another motion on page four.
Madam Chair, Ernie, again, make a motion to approve the request of Leahy Foundation, Inc. applicant for approval of a site plan, application for property located at 41 Burlington Mall Road premises to permit the construction of a 3,025 square foot elevated helipad and a 325 square foot expansion of the existing MRI service building with additional site improvements, as reflected on the site plan entitled Site Improvement Plans for Leahy Hospital and Medical Center Elevated Helipad and MRI Building Edition, prepared by Allen and Major Associates, Inc., dated December 9th, 2020, consisting of 11 sheets, site plan. The project is subject to the following terms, conditions, revisions of terms, revisions, and conditions. Did we amend these?
I don't think we did.
On terms and conditions, that is.
I'll second that, Madam Chair. This is Mike.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, before we move on, Mr. Buckley, I would like to request that you do reach out to your client to have that discussion, and if possible, perhaps you could report back to staff on your progress before our next meeting.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. And staff, I'd ask that you would put together the letter that Mr. Buckley had suggested that we can send to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, thank you, everyone. Moving on.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. We're excited that the helipad is going in. I think it's a benefit and, and for both Burlington residents, and most importantly, for critical patients at Leahy. All right. Our next item is item 7C, a continued public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 4 and 5 Redmond Street, Mari Hills Incorporated is the applicant. Before I, I asked the applicant to introduce themselves, I just wanted to, just quickly note that we have met on this a couple of times. We've had a site visit as well. One of the things that I, as chair, was looking for is a plan that shows us that you can achieve what you're trying to do without waivers, so that we then can consider waivers as a way to make the plan better. We have not seen that up until this point, and I think it might actually be impossible for you to do right now, because we haven't been able to mark the wetlands, or the Conservation Commission has not been able to do that, obviously, because of the snow and the conditions out there. So what I'm going to suggest for today is that you present to us as briefly as possible, your new approach, because I understand you want to come in via Redmond now instead of via Raymond. So if you can show us what that new plan idea is, I'd like you to give us a brief presentation, but I do not think it makes sense for us to discuss it tonight, because until we know if, that it's a viable plan, I, I fear that it's just, it's not really a good use of the board's time until we have that information. So if, if any board members object to that, please let me know right now. Otherwise, I think we can move on and let the applicant give us a brief presentation of the new approach. Okay, I don't see any board members raising their hands. So who is here representing the applicant? Anyone?
Yeah, hi, this is David Romero. I think Phyllis was going to open up.
Okay, hi, Phyllis.
Is she on mute, or?
I can't tell. Let me see.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, we can hear you fine. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I always do that.
I do it, too.
Let me just tell you, that is our intention, to give you a brief presentation of the revised plans. And I do want to let you know that you do have a, the plan you requested, the so-called proof plan. It's in the office, and I did email it to, to the planning board. So I'm sure within the next week to two weeks, you'll get to see it.
Okay, staff, do we have that plan in-house? That was not my understanding.
We did receive a plan today. I think there's a little bit of confusion as to what we were looking for in terms of, I, Um, we did receive a plan today. I think there's a little bit of confusion as to what we were looking for in terms of I I I don't think that there's any intention to build out all of the roads within these, the paper streets, but it would be Raymond and Redmond. I I think it was really to understand what we, what could actually be built here in terms of some of the discussion we've had with the cul-de-sac and some other things for what actually is proposed. So I think, you know, we just got it today. I can't, we haven't corresponded with the applicant, but I think unless the applicant is suggesting that they could build out all of that, the reason for the proof plan is so when you look at the waivers list, you can understand appropriately the impact of if they built this to, for these two homes with the full cul-de-sac, with the full road, with with all the sidewalks, what that impact would be and to ensure that it could be built. Because we've, we've talked about this quite a bit before, that the waiver, waivers of subdivisions are not to allow for a subdivision to be built. It's to make the subdivision itself better. So what is difficult to understand from these plans and without kind of um, seeing what a full cul-de-sac for the requirements are, um, it's kind of hard to, for us to give you any advice on, you know, the the waivers and, you know, can they do it without waivers or not? So so that's really the question about the proof plan that I think is the major question here for the board in terms of can this be built to access these two homes without waivers? Because if it could, then, as you guys know, um, if they can build a subdivision without waivers, it's very difficult for you to deny a subdivision. And that's the reason we have the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. We typically use waivers to make sure that it is better and less impactful on the neighbors for certain impervious surfaces and other things, but it's just really that balance of understanding. You know, can you do it and why is it better? Then it's hard to deal with what we're saying.
All right. Thank you. Um, so so we'll have to review what you submitted today and and hopefully we can figure out if that.
So maybe, can I, can I request, excuse me, I'm, I'm, Madam Chair, I, can we request to maybe talk with staff uh, offline and kind of discuss how we get go on getting that proof plan?
You don't have to ask my permission to talk to staff. That's what they're there for, and you are certainly most welcome to reach out to them.
Okay.
We'd be happy to discuss it.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, go ahead and present, um, if you can, as briefly as possible, um, the new approach through Redmond Street.
Let me just preface that to say it's actually not a new approach. This is our original design.
I do remember.
Design was to, right, to access the two existing lots from Redmond Street. However, at the request of John Keely, uh, he had asked that we explore the possibility of creating the access from Raymond's Road. Uh, we did that, and we found that the impacts to the resource areas was greatly increased and therefore have returned to our original plan. We have been before the Conservation Commission at their meeting last week. And, um, I would like to say, um, even John had said, John Keely had said, the wetlands have been marked and they had been looked at, but he would like to review them again before finalizing and saying, okay. And normally, uh, our wetland scientists, uh, wetland flags are are usually pretty low accepted by John. And I don't think he nor we expect any significant changes. And they may be, but, uh, they'll be minor, I I'm sure. Uh, and so we expect, we've, uh, continued with the Conservation Commission until their meeting of March eleventh and expect to get out there before then, um, hopefully, uh, uh, to, uh, to, to look at the flags so that he can look at the flags again. And, um,
Thank you.
For that, I'll give it to David.
Okay, thank you. And for for my board members, I'm still going to suggest unless someone objects that we just, you know, take a look at what is being presented tonight, but hold our discussion for another time when we have all the information in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what you, what you see on the screen there, that's, um, that's our proposal. It's very similar to what we originally, um, submitted. It's about two hundred and thirty feet of new pavement coming off of the end of Redmond Street. And we are going to have full utility. We'll have drainage, uh, sewer and water. And we'll propose the two driveways accessing off the the new road. It's twenty feet of pavement. We are not hoping to build sidewalks. Um, and as Phyllis said, we have a lot of resource, areas, well, in areas around us. Uh, we did do test pits. That's something new that we've done. We have done test pits and we did find a location for infiltration. And we do show that on the plan. So that's real briefly what we, where we're at right now.
Okay, and this plan, um, you submitted something more detailed to staff just earlier today that shows it can be done without waivers. Is that correct?
We, we did. We show a plan that shows the road going all the way through at twenty-six feet of pavement with full sidewalks. Because the the road is existing, we we can't put pavement in there and build it all, but it's preferable not to because doing so would cross, uh, more wetlands. So that's why we're.
I understand that. We just need to to see the plan that shows it can be done. And it sounds like that's what you've delivered earlier today, but we haven't had time to review it.
Right. That's, that's something I know we'll discuss with, uh, with staff.
Okay.
That down. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'm not planning to discuss this further, but if anyone in in my board has an urgent question that they feel cannot wait, I would let them speak now. Otherwise, we'll just take this up at our next meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to ask the board if there's any additional information that they'd, um, that they'd like to get from the applicant before the next meeting. If there's a question there, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, our meeting is on the fourth, no, excuse me, is on, yeah, is on the fourth, I believe. So they're meeting with the Conservation on the eleventh. I'd like to think that we wouldn't talk about this until the eighteenth, until their their file is completely present everything.
Thank you, Brenda. That's, that's, that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other board members that want to jump in?
Uh, Madam Chair, pardon me. No, I, I was, I think, the first one to ask for the original sidewalk off Raymond Road. Uh, and I would like an opportunity to get on here and and check this out because I did spend some time going through the wetlands down there and so forth. So I I want to be reassured.
I think that's a good idea, Paul. We'll probably, um, do that after the the applicant goes to Conservation, but I do think we'll need a site visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any, um, neighbors or abutters or any other people in the audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment on this matter? Understanding that this is not the the last chance you'll have. Do we see anyone? No? Okay. All right, then I think I'm ready for a motion.
To the planning board meeting of what?
Um, what's the date? Hold on a second.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
That's the motion.
So you also, uh, we also have in the motion that the planning board hereby accepts the, an extension of time mutually agreed upon extension of time to to extend the filing deadline until the, uh, March eleventh, uh, May eleventh.
Okay, um, can someone please say so moved to that?
So moved.
Moved.
And second?
There's a, this, Madam Chair, there's a form S that's on there as well that we're endorsing or we're not endorsing that?
That is what Kristen was just bringing up, to extend the statutory deadline.
Is that, is that what Form S is?
Yes, Form S is to mutually extend the statutory deadline to file that.
So let's first vote on the motion to extend the deadline, please. It's been moved and seconded.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Thank you. And then let's vote on the the motion to, um, continue to March eighteenth, which has also been moved and seconded.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, David. Thank you, Phyllis. We'll see you again in a moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to take items D and H, D through H, together for discussion purposes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? It is unanimous. Let us. Now, hold on a minute. Item seven D is a, is continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section twelve point one point five, PD special permit of the zoning bylaw, one seventy-four Middlesex Turnpike and Norbloom Company is the applicant. One seventy-four Middlesex Turnpike and Norbloom Company is the applicant for all the following as well. Item seven E, a continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point six point seven, discharge from man-made structures to the wetlands of the Northwest Park Plan Development District. Item seven F is a continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point seven point five, accessory health club located entirely within the commercial or residential facility of the Northwest Park Plan Development District. And item G is a, is continued application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point seven point six, dry cleaning, drop-off and pickup only of the Northwest Plan Development District bylaw. And item seven eight is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point seven point twelve, garage space or spaces and or attached or detached structures above and below ground and underbuildings for parking of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronson, I have with me this evening from the Norbloom Company, Todd Norbloom, Todd Fremont Smith. And from BSC, Frank DePietro and Marissa Valentino. And, uh, I thought I'd just give an overview before I turn it over to, uh, leave Todd Fremont Smith and the engineering team to to bring you up to, up to date where we are. We took the comments that have been provided to us for the, and over the last couple of meetings that have provided some written responses to the board and staff on those issues, and we'll touch upon them this evening. Uh, we've also appeared before the Conservation Commission. Um, and my understanding is the Conservation Commission is, uh, holding the hearing open pending, uh, uh, any final, uh, uh, comments or changes from the planning board so that we can move forward. Yeah, going to the Board of Health on Tuesday of next week, I'm sorry, on Monday of next week, for a subcommittee meeting and attending, uh, Board of Health for their recommendations on the ninth. Uh, what they're focused on in our discussions with the Board of Health, it's extremely, or very similar to what their issues were with Lifetime Fitness, which deals with monitoring wells and relocation and then preservation of of those wells. And, uh, and, uh, and those, those types of issues, which I feel confident talking to the staff, uh, that those could be adequately addressed and they will have their comments, uh, to you. Uh, we did not hear any of these are my conversations with the staff of the Board of Health. Uh, there are no major issues. Just want to make sure that we're, uh, on the same page with what we've done on the Lifetime Fitness side. We've had a number of meetings with the Affordable Housing, uh, uh, Committee allowed to discuss the, uh, agreement and the process for the, uh, the rental of the units here, and I think we've made good progress. There's progress yet to be made. We're in the right direction. I'm confident we'll rapidly come to some closure there with a program in place. Um, so with that, I think I would, I'll turn it over to, I think Todd Fremont Smith is going to. Am I correct, Todd?
Yeah, I'm just trying to turn on my. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Todd.
Oh, you can? Okay.
Yes.
Very helpful. And I think just on that last point, I want to thank, uh, Chairman LaRue and, uh, uh, Member Cavino for participating in those long and tedious conversations about senior affordable housing. At least they're.
I think we learned a lot.
We have. We're gonna, we're gonna get there, I think. I, it, there've been some, some tough moments, but I think we're gonna get there, which is exciting.
I agree.
I, I think they're exciting, Todd, not tedious.
Well, I think it's a very creative program and really about it, as we've said before, the the seniors that we already have living at Northwest Park would move it into the apartments at Third Ave. Love being there. They're very sticky tenants. They don't move out. And we love having them and they really enjoy, uh, you know, being in Burlington, but being in professionally managed apartment building. But Bob touched, as he has just said, on the public process. Uh, we have been working on some site plan issues as, as is the purview of this board. Um, specifically traffic, uh, concerns that were raised by the police department, we'll touch on. Uh, retail, the retail building, which I think in concept is, uh, is favored, but we had some tweaks that the, that the, that the staff asked us to make. And then just generally landscaping and the landscaping buffer. So, traffic, um, this is the site plan that's on the screen. The bottom right of the plan is the area of traffic concern. The bottom left, as everyone knows, is a major new, uh, signal, pedestrian crossing intersection, which is operating well. But the police department had some concerns about this open curb cut, um, at the Lifetime Middlesex curb cut. Um, it, it's, we're meant to be using that as a right-in, right-out. But what's, what's been happening sometimes is people have been going the wrong way across traffic and they've witnessed some, some near and I think some actual crashes. So they asked BSC to look at how they can improve the safety of this curb cut at the bottom right of the plant. And Frank, I don't know if you want to talk about what, what you came up with?
Sure. So, um, to be fair, this graphic is not quite up to date to what we've, we've been talking. We presented at the, uh, DCM meeting, uh, the other day. But the idea would be to, uh, put an island that would essentially force traffic right-in, right-out and make a left turn in around very difficult. And the new plan is very similar to this, but listening to comments from staff, what we've done is we've actually, instead of using a twelve-foot lane, we've made it smaller to eleven-foot lane. That allows us to make the island bigger. We also moved, uh, crosswalk back a little bit. So we now have an island in front. It's sort of a barrier for vehicles going down Middlesex Turnpike of about four foot wide. Uh, and then, um, the sidewalk itself or the crosswalk itself will be on grade. We don't have enough room to go the ramps up and down again and meet ADA and and, um, the, uh, excess of battery boards, uh, sort of standards. But we've got a, a larger island now. It's increased by at least a foot on both sides. And discussion we had on, uh, Tuesday at the DCM, this was viewed in a positive light. There's some, still some concerns about long-term. And we talked about, you know, maybe to be monitoring after, uh, the project is put in place to see how well this functions. And then it could be discussions about what happens if it doesn't work. The other part of this is, uh, both the folks from Lifetime Athletic and Norbloom have really agreed that they, they have sort of a captive audience in their customers, clients and tenants. And they're going to push very hard to educate them not to take left turns out of here, but in fact, it'll be safer and quicker to go out by Fourth Avenue by a signal. Um, be happy to answer any questions on that. That's basically just a quick summary of it all.
Thank you, Frank. Um, along with this new island, will there also be signage saying no left turn?
Yes, yes. The new plan has all those signs, all the, uh, MUTCD specific codes, each one of them are on that sign. That was submitted, uh, I believe it was submitted last week. If not, I'll make sure the staff and you folks get that for your next hearing.
Okay, um, when you first brought this picture up, you said it was not exactly what was presented at DCM. Could you tell us what may be different?
Sure. So this one shows there are two twelve-foot wide lanes.
Oh, okay.
So what we've done, we've held the outside vertical granite curbing and we've basically narrowed the lanes to eleven feet. That allows us to increase the island by two feet.
Okay. So that.
The second piece is we shifted in away from Middlesex Turnpike, the crosswalk. It meant, it meant that on either side, we were basically adding new handicap accessible ramps. And it also allowed us to, again, to have a wider front island, if you will, protecting the folks. Um, so both of those are the main, main changes to the.
If the chair would prefer, we could, we could bring up the current plan. I apologize. I had an older plan in here.
That, that's okay. Um, if you have it and it's, it's easy to bring up, I think it would be beneficial.
Is it hard, Frank, to do that?
Um, I'm going to defer to my experts, Marissa and Emily.
Okay, well, while you look for that, I can certainly see if board members have questions regarding this part of the plan. Please, um, board members, feel free to identify yourself. I see Ernie raising his hand. Why don't you start us off?
Yeah, a, a quick question, just based on something Frank or Todd just said. I'm not sure exactly who said it. If, if, uh, it's already recognized that the safest and easiest way into and out of the, uh, both fit time, Lifetime Fitness and the new proposed. into and out of the, both Lifetime Fitness and the new proposed multifamily is through Fourth Avenue, then why keep this open?
I mean, I think, if you can get people to do the right thing, and do right turns in and right turns out, it's simpler, it moves traffic off of the roadway in getting into the site. But here, so, and Marissa, could you make that a little bit bigger? But that's basically the new improved version of it.
Okay.
So, we have the official no-left turn signs on there, and again, you can sort of see, we've shifted the crosswalk back a little bit, the lanes are now 11 feet wide, not the 12 feet, and you've got a relatively good-sized island right along Middlesex Turnpike, then all these curbs would be vertical granite curbing, and we're not exactly sure of the surface within the islands, probably a grass or a pavement type thing, so that we don't have vegetation that would block people's vision going out, so below, whatever below. And we've got, we're showing here the new accessible ramps in the crosswalk. The width between, at the request of the Engineering Department, the width of the opening for the crosswalk, their plow for the sidewalks has five and a half foot minimum width, so we made it six feet, so we give them a little bit of wiggle room so they don't smash into the curb when they decide they're trying to plow that area.
Okay, and there'll be vertical granite curbing on both the islands as well as on the curves?
Yes.
That's right, okay, thank you.
Obviously, except at the cross, at the, you know, handicap ramp, but yes.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ernie, please go ahead.
That was basically what I had to say, but as we were, as we were just talking, there is a review period, I understand Frank was saying that could be built into the, into the, would be built into the permit that we issue, could there also be language within that review period that says something as if it doesn't work, go, I mean, the driveway could be closed?
I think the...
I know that's extreme, but...
Yeah, I think the site is a very large site and benefits with a little bit of breathability from a life safety standpoint, as well as convenience, I think the police, the next default, the police would be, I don't want to speak for the officer, but to make this right, to make this right in only, coming south on Middlesex Turnpike, and to delete the right out, to really accentuate the right in, and just make it just for Middlesex Turnpike, so people can't come out here, but they can in here.
Okay, I see what you're saying, maybe we, so that would actually maybe warrant reconfiguration of the exit out of there.
We're unhappy with, I think the staff had mentioned a review period as well, post-construction.
Thank you, all set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ernie, any other members that have questions on this?
Paul Raymond here, thinking on the same time, a thing that Ernie was, I was wondering that if we could have that monitored after it's completed, it just require a monitoring period, so we could observe what's happening, and depending on how it functions, we might have to close it up, I mean, because it's not really desirable, but if it can function, and people can get out that way without, you know, too much conflict from the turnpike, possibly it could be monitored in the morning hours, when people would be most likely coming out, just to observe how it's working.
Kristen, is that in the decision already?
We don't have a decision drafted yet, but we have notes to, that that will definitely be in the decision. Sergeant McCann, who is the one on DCM, definitely was talking about this, did suggest a monitoring period, did suggest that the right-in movement is not at all a concern, the right-out is traveling, most likely are traveling south anyway, so going to the signal actually wouldn't be, wouldn't be too difficult. But he also mentioned that, you know, they're on Middlesex Turnpike a lot, so just in general observation by the Police Department as they drive around town is certainly something, so we'll know if there becomes an issue pretty quickly.
Okay.
As well as an improvement, I mean, their biggest issue is that the near crash, crash as well as near crash that they see with the left turn in and out of here movements that they've been talking about for, actually since Lifetime opened, so I think this is a perfect opportunity to address the issue.
Okay, thank you, Kristen, thank you, Paul, any other board members have any questions or comments on this? Okay, I don't expect, but let's see if there's anyone else in the listening audience, butters, neighbors, residents that have concerns, does anyone wish to speak on this matter? All right, seeing no one.
Keep going?
Yes.
Okay, should I keep going?
Yes, please, Todd.
Okay, sure, so that's traffic, if I can get the machine to keep going. On the retail building, I think we heard, I think we heard, general support for some kind of mixed-use structure, again, we're gonna come back to the board when we know exactly who it is, whether it's a Pete's Coffee, or who it is, but we also heard a desire to delete the, delete the drive-through location that was shown on the site plan, because that implies that a drive-through location is approved by the board, when in fact it has not been. So we'd like to just show the retail pad on the site plan, and we'll take away the drive-through on the updated plans for the time being, we would reserve the request if we do get some creative use that wants a drive-through, I don't believe food drive-through is allowed by the zoning anyway, I think that would send us back to town meeting, Bob, if I'm not mistaken, for casual. You're on mute.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, thank you.
So, on the retail, that's the modification we're proposing, generally on landscaping, I know that there's a desire by the board to really have a heavy landscaped, I believe there's a desire to have a heavy landscape edge here along Middlesex Turnpike, we agree to not, despite my previous comments, this is not really a retail location, this is a location that can easily be buffered, it's better for the residential to be buffered from the road and vice versa, so, again, just a reminder, this is intended to replicate, although it's deeper than the Bancroft landscaping at Third Avenue, just a progress print here, which we submitted to staff, again, ignore the drive-through top left of the plan on the retail, but you'll see the attention to detail, the plantings, there are some established significant trees along Middlesex Turnpike that we're going to be, that will remain here, there'll be other trees planted, that will be not one-inch caliper trees, significant trees that will grow up over time, as well as understory landscape. Also, we've been fighting very hard to keep the trees on Fourth Avenue, this is a view from Middlesex Turnpike looking toward the Landlock parcel to the west that I took last summer, and there's some beautiful, there's really a nice LA of maple trees that go all the way down Fourth Avenue that I think we should, there are a couple missing on the right that I think should be replanted, but I think that will also help buffer the building from the road. And then to remind the board that at Third Ave, although it starts off smaller, because that's just the way you can't plant, we've had, we've had really bad luck planting giant trees and giant bushes, they tend to die, they do better when we plant them at a normal size, but then very quickly, with irrigation, they grow into a robust landscaping buffer, and this is two years ago, it's even better now, and as I said, at Fourth Avenue, our landscaping buffer is at least 10 feet deeper than here at Bancroft, so we will pay very close attention to that. There was some discussion with the staff about wellness, you know, this building, and also just walkability and sustainability, so I'll go through those if I may, this building, you know, it is a very nice product, but it is a product that we're designing to meet the needs of the Burlington market, both the residential market and the business community, and we think, we've had great reception, again, at Third Avenue with the Tremont and the Huntington, with people from the community moving into these buildings, but also corporate citizens recognizing proximity and walking to work, so it's going to be a nice building, but we don't mean to imply that it's overly luxurious and not priced for this market, it's going to be delivered to the market appropriately. In terms of walking, we heard, especially from the Concom, a desire to continue walking trails through the park, we did, as the staff had asked us to do, as part of the board, as part of the Lifetime Fitness approval, we did build the first leg of this trail through the woods, which runs from the Lifetime, really from Middlesex Turnpike, up behind Lifetime Fitness up to North Ave, there are additional trails that I've personally hiked, I think we can get trails that go for literally miles up to Bedford, along Route 3, and then back down through the park, which we're gonna work on with John Keely and his board, because some of the areas do cross the wetland areas that are along Route 3, but we'll keep this board in the loop, but again, wherever we can at the park, we're just trying to continue to knit the park together with pedestrian walkways, but also, this is a view up behind Lifetime Fitness, it's actually a very, very surprisingly remote and wooded setting that people are jogging and walking, and we're gonna continue these trails as we build out the park. In terms of sustainability, as we said, we're designing a LEED certifiable building, we have literally an ALWIFE bus that stops at the site, which is, which is enormous benefit, that goes direct to ALWIFE, we'll be building electric vehicle charging stations inside the building, we'll be putting PV on top of the building, and we'd like to talk in the future, I don't think it's appropriate right now, but maybe in the future, like to talk to you about solar car parts, they're very popular among potential buildings, but we want to make sure that they're done in a way that's not detrimental to the aesthetic along Middlesex Turnpike, so they're not proposed right now. And I think that's the end of our formal presentation, we did submit written responses to some of the members' questions, I hope we addressed all of those. Let me see if I can turn this off.
Okay, thank you, Todd, I'm sure that, I'm sure members have questions on that, the rest of that, so I'm gonna see who wants to jump in first, rather than go through the whole list, because I don't know if everyone wants to chime in, so, who would like to speak, I've heard someone raise their hand, I heard a little sound, who is that?
It's me, Bill.
Bill, okay, thank you, Bill, please go ahead.
So, yeah, thanks, thanks, I did put in an extensive list of questions, and I, the one I'd like to continue on was the underground parking, and I think the response that came back was saying that they'll figure out parking based on, you know, the conditions of the market. Would one of the underground parking spaces be designated for the senior, one parking spot per senior resident, or how is that gonna play out?
T2, you want to answer that?
Yes, in terms of how the operations here would work, we envision that it would be similar or compatible with how the affordable programs are administered up the hill, in which the affordable allowances, while they do cover utilities, they do not cover parking per se, so that the parking would be based on market conditions.
Okay, so, maybe in straight English, you're saying that the senior housing doesn't get parking under the garage?
Well, it's saying that we, we could look at how we do it today, at the Huntington, for instance, where, and this is based on market conditions, I believe that the leasing allows for a parking space under the, within the podium for two bedrooms, and so if that's the policy at this building, then every two bedroom would come with a parking, whether it was a market or affordable, and we just don't, this being a product that's, you know, over two years away from delivery, we don't know what that policy is, but whatever the policy is, it will be applied equally across all types.
Okay, I wonder if, maybe you could make it unequal, because where I think of the seniors, if you have a senior there versus a non-senior, you probably want them to pack under the building versus not under the building, because then they're gonna have to go out there, ice and snow, and clean off their car, so I think that's kind of the benefit, I don't know if the housing partnership had taken that into account.
That hasn't come up in our discussions, Bill.
Okay.
It's a good point, Bill, so let me just try to understand what Todd Norbloom was saying, so currently, at your other buildings, people who rent, whether they are moderate income or paying market value, if you have a two-bedroom apartment, you have a parking space, if you have a one-bedroom apartment, you do not have a parking space under the building?
If you have a two-bedroom, you get, you automatically get one space under the, and then if you want another space, you can either rent it under the podium or have one outside, T2, is that how it works?
So people who have one-bedroom apartments do not get a space underneath?
You're on mute.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, he was talking about me, in the background, the, that's just how it works today, but if you rent, if you were to go to the Huntington and rent a one-bedroom, with your rent, you would have a surface parking space included that's exterior to the building.
If you wanted to, could you rent one under the building?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a marketing, it's how we price the unit in the market against, against competing buildings in the market.
So, I don't know what percentage of the senior apartments, which this building, I think we said was gonna be around 23, 26?
23.
Do you know how many of them will be one-bedrooms, and how many of them will be two?
I hold up the Huntington as an example, that policy changes based on the market, so I'd be happy to answer your question, I don't have to break down off the top of my head, but I guess that if there are three, it would be about 10 of them as two bedrooms, something like that, four years...
It's probably, Barbara, we could talk about it in the Affordable Housing meeting, but it typically is about 50/50 ones and two bedrooms in these buildings, so I would assume that the affordable units would be representative of that mix.
Okay, I share Bill's concern, because these are units that are specifically targeted towards seniors, they're gonna want covered parking.
Yeah.
We're gonna want them to have covered parking, you're gonna want them to have covered parking, because you don't want them slipping and falling in your parking lot.
So, we asked, we asked them to give us a breakdown of the unit count, as well as the affordable units, and those is part of kind of this, as well as the housing discussion, but I think in line with that, if you guys can figure out how parking lays out in that kind of matrix, that would be helpful for the next meeting.
Yes, I think that's gonna be important, thank you, thanks for bringing that up, Bill.
Sure, and just one more comment I had, the last meeting, I think Mr. Norbloom indicated that there would be lifetime membership included in with the senior housing, I had since heard from a town meeting member who listened, I think on the conservation meeting, that it's actually only one membership, so if there's one person in the, in the senior housing, then they get the lifetime membership, but if there's two, they still only get the one lifetime membership, and the other person has to pay for it, it's senior, is that correct?
That's my understanding, right now, that's my understanding of how Lifetime Fitness runs their program across the country, that each unit has, and they have this, I also think there's a discounted pass for the second unit.
So, so for the seniors, again, this is just for seniors?
Yeah.
I think you've probably put a burden on, I don't think that's probably what Town Meeting had intended for this setup to be, to be more cost to the seniors, to belong to the lifetime, so you, I think if we look at, if you had two seniors living, maybe it's maximum two, right, two memberships per, if you can live...
I hear the question, I can't answer it tonight, we can bring it up at the next hearing, I mean, I, the meeting intended that we build affordable senior housing and give them free health club membership, so I would...
Yeah, if that's the way, yeah, if that's the way you wanted to go with your senior housing, was to go with this upscale Lifetime Fitness agreement and merger, if you don't want to do that, then the memberships are off the table, and I think that's what everybody had intended for this to be, but now you've got the game, so we're gonna, we're gonna up it with you, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's fair, you know, if you add something else, if you say, well, let's make it a Mar-a-Lago, and say you have to spend, you know, $5,000 at the retail site on there as well, would you give that, would you have to say, no, your senior person has to spend that much money there, so it's becoming a club, right, that you're saying, for you to live there, you get that amenity, but you have to pay for it, and it's, from the senior standpoint, that's kind of, I think, in conflict with the intent that this was approved by Town Meeting.
Well, they don't have to pay for it, though, they're applying, correct?
They could, right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but there's all this amenities, and the intent of the billing is this lifetime combination, amenities, and I say, well, you guys get it, right, because you have, you get it as part of your rent, but you guys over here that are part of the senior, and you don't.
Well, you do, you do get one.
Actually, they, they actually get treated exactly the same, they actually get treated exactly the same way as the market, right, guys?
Yeah.
We're both parking.
I'd like to record to be clear, too. At the time when we went to Town Meeting, Lifetime was not part of the project.
Exactly right. Yep. There's no discussion on that. So this is, this is not, you know, when I talk to Town Meeting members, that's not what they intended for this to be, but you guys are changing it, which is fine. So let's kind of incorporate, again, we're focusing on the seniors here. That's how this got through.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in, you know, my, the, well, the membership, I think, is, you know, is important. I'd be more concerned about the parking. You know, I'd hate to see that, you know, there's a senior, you know, applying to get into this complex and all of a sudden the market conditions have changed. I think we need to be a little bit clear on how that is presented and what really that entails. Because, you know, the market can change. As somebody with a real estate background, you know, market conditions can change. Opinions and values are just that, just an opinion. So if your market conditions in your mind have changed, they may not in somebody else's. And like I said, I just think we need more clarity there.
I think maybe that should probably be reflected in the agreement between the town and Nordblom as far as the apartments, senior apartments are concerned. Right? Isn't that where it would be?
Do you mean the appropriate?
Yeah, parking, yes, yes. That's what I mean, yeah. And as far as the other thing, as long as the seniors are treated the same as anybody else and the conflict is treated vis a vis the membership, if there's one membership for all the other apartments. I don't think there should be two memberships for the senior apartments just because there's two seniors there. My opinion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, is there anyone else that wanted to chime in on this? No, okay. Any people in the listening audience that are not according where they want to speak?
I'm sorry, Barbara, I just have one question.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Just so to clarify that, I mean, as I'm kind of listening to the conversation on this one. Is there any, so there is no distinction between a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom? So one-bedroom, you're paying a little bit more money for them, but, I mean, a two-bedroom, you're paying a little bit more money. Are there, are there two memberships to go with two bedrooms, one membership goes with a one-bedroom, or there's no distinction whatsoever? Just always, all the units have one regardless of affordable or non-affordable or whatever? It's only, like in all of the units within the complex, is only one?
Correct. All units, all units be treated equally.
Okay, whether it's a two-bedroom or one-bedroom, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, market affordable, one, two-bedroom, all treated.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So are there neighbors or residents that have questions on this matter? Okay.
May I just ask a question quickly?
Of course.
If you have a membership for a unit, does that mean that only one member of that unit can use it? Or is the membership for either person that's in the unit?
It's my understanding, Paul, that it's one person. So if you and Jane were living there and you were the member, or you were the person, the resident who had the membership, only you could go. You could maybe bring Jane once in a while as your guest, but if Jane wanted to go all the time, you'd have to buy a membership for her.
Oh, wait, she finds that out.
Again, this is
Hold out, dear, but I get the membership so you could take a walk.
Well, maybe you have to give the membership to her and you'll have to be the one taking the walk.
Wait a minute. Thank you.
Okay.
Jane gets the membership.
Anyone else? No? Okay, I think we are ready to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of March 4th, 2021. So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Apemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's our hope that we'll get the information to the staff for distribution to the board prior to the 4th, but we're hoping that we could resolve these issues and move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, I have a number of items. I'm looking for a motion to take items 7I through 7N together for discussion purposes.
Paul, so moved.
Seconded, Bill.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? Okay. So these items, items 7I through 7N, are all for the property located at 111 Terrace Hall Avenue. SciFox Incorporated is the applicant. Item 7I is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.1 light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing of the zoning bylaw. Item 7J is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.1.1 research and development of the zoning bylaw. Item 7K is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4 laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine, and physics of the zoning bylaw. Item 7L is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.1 life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacture, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental and biomedical devices subject to the regulations of the Board of Health. An additional regulations in Article 10, Section 10.5.0 biosafety level four laboratories as defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaw. Item 7M is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9 hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals, use, storage, transport, disposal, and discharge of the zoning bylaw. And item 7N is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.11 generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the zoning bylaw. So that was a lot. Hello? Hello to the folks at SciFox. Who is here representing SciFox tonight?
Hello, it's two of us. My name is Mike and this is Diedrich. We're the co-founders and then we also have Armando on here who's been leading the effort with the permits. As well as Mike from the Seaver Construction that's doing the construction.
Okay, thank you and welcome. And why don't you tell us a little bit about what SciFox is doing?
Sure, so we have a couple of slides.
Okay.
We can share.
Sorry about my dog.
Can you see our screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, yeah, we're, so let me start by saying, so we, basically, we started the company in Cambridge at a lab accelerator. So like a shared lab space near MIT called Nest. And, you know, we've been successful enough to raise a couple of years' worth of funds. And, you know, we wanted to put roots down in a standalone building where we could, you know, really flourish. And we did a big search and found that Burlington made sense for us. So we're excited to be here. Yeah, and excited for the Lifetime Gym, which I guess every, it seems to be a hot topic based on the previous discussion. So we're almost, we're basically across the street from Lifetime. And, yeah, we'll just go over quickly our, you know, the mission and the overview of the company, funding to date, and then, you know, details related to the building itself and waste handling, safety, and so on. So just a little bit of background on us. So we're, we have a lot of experience with optical chips. So taking big optical systems and miniaturizing them to actually have like a silicon chip that has all the optics on it. So it's taking, you know, it can take a whole table of optical components that would cost thousands and thousands of dollars and produce them on a Tencent chip. So Diedrich actually was responsible for the design of the Acacia coherent transceiver. Acacia is a big Massachusetts success story, so they went IPO. And actually, this phone call is very likely going through one of these chips. So they control, it's like a data center chip. And he also developed a coherent LiDAR at MIT and so on. I have some experience with silicon photonics in the last couple of years for computation. But my background's actually in chemistry. So we're kind of merging these two things, the optical chips and chemistry, to build a handheld system for analyzing liquids for proteins and DNA. So the bulk of what we do at the company is actually testing these chips and optics and electronics. And we do a little bit of chemistry and biology to show the performance of the chips. We don't actually work with, you know, live viruses or human samples or anything like that. But we work with like model, very simple model samples. And then we have partners that are actually more, you know, pure biotech companies that are, you know, going to be using our, using our devices. Yeah, so a little more information about our technology, but essentially allows us to take actually more than one optical chip and put them all together into a product. And, yeah, currently, this is, you know, more important than ever because actually most diagnostics products, like for COVID testing, other tests, contain a lot of optics. And it's, besides the cost and everything else, it's just very hard to build a large quantity of these machines because they're all made out of thousands of parts. And so we're actually able to build billions of tests a month, not ourselves in this facility, but through, using foundries. So the same foundries that produce silicon chips for cell phones can produce the types of chips that we make. So there's a really big implication for being able to produce huge quantities of lab-quality sensors like for diagnostics, such as COVID diagnostics.
Madam Chair, I can interrupt real quick. This is Bill.
Sure.
Just based on what I saw in the slides, I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one.
Okay.
Okay, hold on, Madam Chair was muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Bill. So you're recused.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So you will not be voting on or discussing this matter.
That's correct.
Thank you, Bill. Please go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, so kind of our, you know, pitch for the product is that it's like a large piece of expensive lab equipment, but it's more in the form factor of like a very simple pregnancy test type thing. It's like a handheld, a handheld device. And there's been a lot of success in the past with doing things like this. So there's a company called Butterfly Network. Actually, they recently went public, but they basically took an ultrasound system and put it on a chip. And that's, you know, all kinds of new use cases have been developed with it because it's handheld. So we're doing that for diagnostics, basically taking all the optics you need to do these kind of tests and putting them on chips. Yeah, this is like a short video of how the device works. So sample goes into this tube. It can be heated up or not, so it depends on the test. And then it goes into a disposable plastic cartridge. So the majority of the work we do is really developing this reader, which is, yeah, it's similar to like any standard consumer electronic combined with some optical chips. So it's pretty straightforward in terms of, you know, there's nothing hazardous or, you know, complex from the perspective of, you know, I think, you know, just the public, I would say. It's like a standard consumer product. And we don't manufacture it here. We actually outsource that to a contract manufacturer. So we just do design and, you know, testing of prototypes and so on. Yeah, this is just some more information about different COVID tests that are out there. But these are the ones that are approved by the FDA. So currently, we're working on a COVID antigen test. So these are the FDA-approved ones. And the best sensitivity out there is in the range of one pica molar. So we don't expect you to know what this means or anything, but it's just, just to give an idea, we're at the low end of this range with this handheld device. Usually, it's like a decent-sized tabletop box. Yeah, this is more information about kind of our first target is just, we're just making a single-use cartridge that you can put saliva into for a basic, like very fast 15-minute COVID test. So the build-out of the space is, the office space, actually, we inherited it from the church that moved to a new location. So we're basically keeping that. We've made, you know, no changes essentially. And then we are installing a biosafety level-one lab. So level-one is basically just having, you know, a couple sinks. It's not in a shower in case somebody gets acid on themselves or something like that. But there's no, you can't really work with anything hazardous in a biosafety level-one lab. And then there's some, you know, photonics benches, which are, again, just small parts and like lasers, electronics, and then some mixed-use space like for drilling parts or, you know, making little jigs and so on, like some microscopes over here. So that's what's, you know, the basic, you know, look of the space is, can be seen here. And I guess maybe I should pause. Like, do you have any questions on the arrangements in the lab or anything like that?
Sorry, had to unmute myself. I think you can probably finish and we'll take questions at the end because I don't think this part has been something that we are going to have a whole lot of questions on. So I think you can continue.
Yeah, sounds good. Just, yeah, feel free to interrupt me at any time.
Okay.
As needed. So basically, the activity, like I was saying, the activities in the lab are mostly electronics. We do some biosafety level-one type activity, which is basically any kind of biology, you know, no matter how safe, goes into biosafety level-one. So there's no, there's no level zero. So if there was, we would probably be level zero. And we don't work with any dangerous, we don't work with, you know, human-like tissues or any live viruses or, you know, biohazardous material. We produce very little hazardous waste because the chips are just very small. So it's things like cleaning them with a solvent. But it's, the quantities are tiny and it's not very hazardous waste, like mildly hazardous waste, and we deal with it all. You know, we have a complete plan for dealing with it that's been developed by a consulting company. And we have all the standard, you know, equipment for that. And so the company that we work with is triumvirate environmental. And, you know, they do this for a lot of companies and they develop a whole biosafety and chemical hygiene plan as well as actually pick up the waste as well. And so we're on a very tight schedule to actually try to release this product because of, obviously because of the pandemic. So we're doing our best to, you know, just get moved in here and get going. Maybe Diedrich, you can speak to this.
Yeah, so yeah, in terms of timeline, so, yeah, we moved into the office space right now. But, yeah, we really want to get our COVID test as quickly as possible and, yeah, basically hand it over to our partners such that they can produce it in large volumes. So, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, by the summer, we're planning to have, you know, the final prototypes of the device. So we can go through what's called emergency use authorization with our biotech company partner and, you know, the FDA. So right now, we're, as of, yeah, like three days from now, we're going to be in between labs. So it's actually critical for us to finish the build of this lab so we can continue, continue going, you know, moving quickly. Yeah, this is like a long timeline, but, or a complicated timeline, but basically, we're targeting June 1st for really the beta units is what we're calling them. But that's, that's the final version of the product. So this is the site plan. We're, this is where our building is. It's over here. I don't know if you can see my mouse, but this is the building. We're not, we're not making any changes to the exterior of the building. This is just some plumbing, the plumbing drawings. And this is, the drain has been put in and that's all been done already and approved. And just an idea of how we're dealing with, you know, flammables and so on. So there are just standard procedures like using a fume hood or biosafety cabinet and a flammable's cabinet and so on. So we have all the standard procedures in place and the standard equipment. This is just a list of, you know, the types of things we're using, which looks complicated, but literally, I mean, this is alcohol, like, you know, the same kind that's in, you know, alcoholic drinks and just some basic solvents. And, you know, I don't know, phosphate buffer is just saltwater, basically. I mean, there's, a lot of this is like, the names are complex, but in reality, we're using very simple things. Some of these are proteins. And then the quantities are very small. So we're talking like 200 milliliters a month of alcohol, things like that. Because we're, what we're doing is miniature, so we really use very small quantities. And obviously, this is all disposed of correctly. It's not put down the drain. And then we have, it's not shown here, but we have, we've installed a chip tank. Maybe it is in the plumbing drawings, yeah. So we have a chip tank for all the, you know, for the drain that comes from the lab sink, although we won't be although we won't be putting chemicals down the lab sink. Yeah, so I thi- I think that's the, that's the basic overview.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Mike, who's on the call, can talk more about the safety measures that are put in place.
When you do address that, can you also address if you are appearing before the Board of Health or have already spoken with the Board of Health and where things stand with the Board of Health? Because that's going to be important to my fellow board members.
Sure, we can speak to that. So, we've, we have talked to them several times and they, I think they gave an official, you know, the, I, I'm not sure what to call it, but they basically have said that they don't need to approve this.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but yeah, Mike, do you, can you speak to the plumbing and the wastewater? I don't know if he's muted or he's listening.
I'm not sure if we need to get to that level of detail.
So that we do, actually. I think we can probably turn it over to the board members for questions. But first, let me see if our staff wants to chime in on this first.
Sure. So, actually, do note in your staff report, there is a 4274, which is a life science special permit. But you also will note that it's not part of the special permit in the motion. When they first came to us, we were kind of like, is it? Is it not? Is it life science? Certainly, medical device and needs laboratories, R and D, and, and those type of things in terms of the chip. And we're just trying to figure out that relationship. Since they have applied, they have spoke extensively with the Board of Health. They are not using any biological materials or agents at this time. We do have a condition in your special permit that says, you know, if, if any time in the future they do, they would need to come in to amend this and work with the Board of Health. But with that, we're really looking at a medical device company where a lot of anything that they're doing and related to biological is done not here. So, so that's, just really wanted to focus your attention there. Second, they are doing things that are certainly in line with trying to allow us to have more COVID testing and other things. So, you know, we appreciate the need to try to do what we can to accelerate them getting really up and running. They have, I think, moved into the office space because offices are allowed use. They could move in. However, this, the other activities are all covered in the special permit. So, we would actually, we have a special permit drafted and ready for you to act on. And we would recommend that this would be ready to move forward if the board is comfortable. We do have comment, full comments from all of the departments, and they're all favorable or no objection. And I don't see any abutters on the phone, but we'll certainly, when you ask for any abutter comments, address those as they may or may not come in.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. So, we do not need, do we have any department comments that we need to read into the record?
The only department comments that we got were from the Board of Health, and there were just four of them. And they're kind of all the standards, like a demolition, you know, very standard stuff for pretty much any project that would happen in town, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is Mike DeVinson with Seaver Construction. I'm back on now. Sorry about that, you guys. I had a problem with the mute button.
No problem, Mike. We understand. We also have problems with mute buttons from time to time. So, I'm, I think right now, I'm going to go to my board members and, and run down the list and see who may or may not have questions. Brenda, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I'm, I'm in support of approving this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Bill is not participating. Mike Espo, would you like to ask any questions or make any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question was already covered. It was the Board of Health stuff, but we was covered fully, so I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay. Ernie Covino?
Just, just one quick one. And I'm making an assumption that their number of employees would easily fit in the parking space since this parking space was used for church before. Am I correct? And I can just, staff can just answer that if they could.
Yeah, there's, we, we don't foresee needing to increase the number of parking spaces.
How many employees do you intend to have?
So, currently, we have 13 people and we might go up to about 20 in this building. But there are.
Not a problem.
Yeah, exactly. There are a lot of parking spaces, actually.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ernie. Anything else? Okay. What, do you have any comments?
No, just quickly. This is, this is just what we're looking for. We're getting diversity in the park. We're getting new cutting-edge incubator place like this. And if the Board of Health says it's fine, it's fine with me.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Joe and Pemba?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I also have no problems or questions. This seems pretty straightforward to me. As, as Paul said, if the Board of Health is comfortable, that I am comfortable as well. Are there any members of the listening audience, abutters or residents, or anyone else who has any questions on this matter? Please identify yourself. Staff, do we see anyone? No. Okay. All right. I think we're ready to move on.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Hold on one sec, one quick question, Madam Chair, first.
Yes, Joe.
Were there any department comments? There were no department, so I assume.
Liz covered that. The only department comments were from Board of Health and they were standard.
Right.
The others were just affirmative.
And they had been perfectly fine with, right? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. All right, so Mike has moved to close the public hearing. And Ernie seconded.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Abstain.
Sorry. Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to make the motion? Oh, no one wants to read this one.
No, okay. Go ahead, Paul. You got it. Okay, sure. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of five special permits pursuant to section 4.2.7.1, light manufacturing or processing plants, section 4.2.7.1.1, research and development, section 4.2.7.4, laboratories engaged in research, section 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials, and section 4.2.7.11, generation or storage of hazardous waste of the Burlington zoning by law to permit the operation of, of a photonics and microelectronics firm engaged in research, development, and prototyping of biomedical devices by the name of SciOps, SciFox Inc. on property located within the General, Industrial, and Aquifer districts at 111 Terrace Hall Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
Second. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Abstain.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you and welcome to Burlington. We'll be very interested to hear more about your work in the future.
Yeah, thank you.
You will take the time to update us from time to time.
Definitely.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks for your time today.
Thank you, Al.
Burlington. Okay, moving on, we are, next item on our agenda is minutes. We have minutes for January 7th, January 21st, and February 1st. I'm going to request that we vote on these separately since I will not be voting on January 7th. If we want, we can vote on the other two together. Is everyone, is there anyone who is not able to vote on minutes at this time?
I can't vote on January 7th either, Madam Chair.
All right. Why don't we take January 7th separately and then we can vote on the 21st and 24th together? Okay? Now I have a motion.
Hello, most to make, accept the minutes of January 7th, 2020.
Second.
Um, Vice Chairman LaRue. Uh, Member Clerk, Member, Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Uh, yes.
You can just say it. All those in favor.
Oh, we can do that. Oh.
And then, but just, but just make sure we know who's, who are the ones not voting, if they're not.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No, abstain. I am abstaining.
Abstain.
And Mike is abstaining. Okay.
So, five of you, the two of you abstain.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 1st, 2020, and February 4th, 2021?
So moved.
Seconded, Madam Chair.
All, all those in favor say aye?
With, with, with edits.
I'm sorry, Bill?
Sorry, with edits that I gave to Brady.
Yes, member, this is Brady. Member Gaffney, those have been made.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstained. Okay, so those meeting minutes are accepted unanimously. All right. Are there any other members that have any other business they would like to bring forward at this time? Keeping in mind that we all want to go home.
I, I would, just a quick, just a quick item, Madam Chair.
Of course, Joe.
I just want, I want to take this opportunity, through this past week, I've watched multiple media sources on TV news. And I've seen Dr. Weiner from the Board of Health as a advocate for the town of Burlington. And he has done such a phenomenal job. I just want to thank him for the, from a member of the town of Burlington and commend him for what he's done to advocate for this town, for our fair share of vaccinations, for our seniors and other members of the community. He's been, he's been tirelessly working on this COVID thing from the beginning of it. And he's, he deserves recognition for that. And I, I for one would love to just recognize him that, for that, those, those efforts, so.
Thank you, Joe. I agree with you. Dr. Weiner has been.
I'm sure it's unanimous, Barbara.
Yes, I'm sure you're right. He's been working really hard and we greatly appreciate it. So, thank you, Dr. Weiner. And thank you, Joe, for bringing that up. Did anyone have anything else they need to bring forward?
Barbara, I just have a question. Am I to, on recreation, we're having our meetings Zoom like this, but not on a regular basis if they're not needed. So, I was late this time because I didn't, I didn't hear from anybody. But am I to assume that we're going to have it on our regular schedule, just Zoom it?
I'm sorry, are you mean, are you talking about the recreation department meeting?
No, I'm talking about planning. I'm just saying, on recreation, we, we're more, we have meetings when it's necessary. In other words, we're not on a regular schedule. And so, I wasn't sure the planning board was just on our regular schedule of meetings. And we'll Zoom it every meeting from here on out, on the usual time. That was why I didn't get down. I, I, after I got called, I ran down to the mailbox and the stuff was in there and so forth.
So, you're asking if we're going to have in-person meetings or Zoom meetings?
No, I'm asking you if we're going to have a planning board meeting as scheduled at the beginning of the year. In other words, we're going to, whether there's any important, really important business or not, we're still going to have our regular meetings.
All meetings are planned as, as we've initially planned. And as every year, we start getting busier and busier. And February, that's the same to be true this year, in February through April. I can say we'll be on schedule every two weeks.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Any other matters that anyone wants to bring forward? If not, I am ready for a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Seconded, Bill.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.